So five, we're gonna start the meeting. Could we have the roll call, please? Ms. Tameri.
Member Ash?
Here.
Member Miriam?
Here.
Member Patz?
Present.
Vice President Dice?
Here.
President Athel?
Present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, no changes.
All right. Welcome, everyone. This is the time of the meeting for public comment on any items within our jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. Do we have any such public comment tonight? Okay. Then we will move right to our special presentation of the Emory Secondary School Principal Report, and he's brought a whole crew with him tonight to help out. Mr. Ferber?
Okay, can you hear me? Good evening, board members. Dr. Rubio, Ms. Tameri, Ms. Hurrell, kids, audience, thank you very much for coming this evening. I want to give you an update on what's going on at ESS, which is Emory High School, but it's Emory Secondary School, so maybe discussion later about that. Let me tell you what's going on here. Here we go. Mr. Miles Green, our 11th and 12th grade English teacher, went to Yale for the Yale Initiative. He goes to these conferences every couple of months. Dr. Rubio went a couple of months ago. He went, he reviewed applications with other city representatives in an effort to recruit and welcome new teachers into a program that will increase the efficacy of teachers in low socioeconomic classrooms across the country. In March, we celebrated Emeryville Youth Art Month as part of ACOE's Art is Education Program. There are displays of student works in Emeryville City Hall, Ruby's Cafe, and Avenue 64 Gallery. Students were recognized for their work at a reception at Ruby's Cafe with city council members, Dr. Rubio and myself. Ms. Juliette Dunn was there, a few other people. Mr. Patterson was there. So we had a lot of people turn out from the school and the district. In early March, myself and two of my teachers, one including Mr. Burns over there, participated in the California League of High Schools Annual Conference in Sacramento. We were able to attend up to seven sessions, including two with Dr. Robert Marzano, who's probably the foremost author of educational literature, you know that. I'm gonna tell you this, I'm gonna be honest with you. His writing is phenomenal. His presentations, it's like watching paint dry.[200.12][200.12](Laughter). But, but we, we sat through two of his sessions. It was probably about good four or five hours that we'll never get back. But he is a very dynamic, very interesting guy, and he has, his books are, you know, among the best and most elite. And Mr. Patz, I'm sure you know, you're familiar with that as well. So we went there. But clearly, the star of the conference was Noah Salzman. This guy, this guy walks into a room with several of us in there, probably a room full, I guess, and he entertained and enlightened us on classroom management. His skills were truly compelling, and learning the fogging technique made this interesting and a great fit for our staff. If we decide to hire him, I think we can get him for a song as professional development for classroom management. He's amazing. And Mr. Burns, will you attest to that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. At today's staff meeting, I sunshine our plan for, I like to use that word, for homeroom, study hall, life skills class for incoming ninth graders in the fall. In this zero-period class, students will learn to use planners, get homework support, be enlightened on positive behavior intervention and life skills. Each morning, our students will have the opportunity to get help with their notebooks, class projects, and homework. In addition, we will support the learning process and have all ninth-grade students prove themselves, as they may have zero period for free in the second semester if they, if they're doing well enough to let them go. Fly, my little ninth graders, fly. Right? So they're ready. That's the whole thing. Okay. Nobody's smiling. Okay. The other credit-deficient students in grades 10 through 12, I was asked to look into several programs that might support a credit recovery. One such program was called Odysseyware, and we did a webinar in my office with a couple teachers, all the tech guys, and, and my counselor a couple of weeks back. The Odysseyware is a very interesting program, very kid-friendly. It's got, it's got, you know, live streaming instruction, it's got all sorts of things that are really interesting and easy to learn from. It's got problem solving. It has its own testing. You could, you could block the testing and have the teacher make the test. The test could be created from the, from the content area, and there's, you know, it's, it's got not only credit recovery, it's got also coursework. So they can do an entire course, so they can do credit recovery, and the teacher can facilitate what chapters and what units they need to do based on an assessment for each of these. It's great stuff. So I'm planning to bring that a little bit more into the limelight soon. But we had the opportunity to look at it, and we talked about it, and I think most of us are on board because one of our biggest problems, we can't accept kids who are way behind in credits because we hadn't had the vehicle to really bring them up. And I think this is possibly the vehicle that we could use. And it's, it's relatively inexpensive.
Is that independent study, or is that in conjunction with existing courses?
It'd be in conjunction with existing courses. For instance, if a student had failed an algebra class, they'll take an assessment test, and then they'll be given all these units that show what areas they're weak on. And once they, they're ready for testing, they'll go to the algebra teacher, and the algebra teacher, teacher will produce the test, and then they have the answer key. So they don't really have to do anything except facilitate it and make sure, and then sign off on the grade, so they can, they can make up their grades for that. So for instance, it's a good example. I spent a whole year in a science class, and let me tell you something, science was not my forte. I spent a whole year, I tried, and I tried, and I tried, and I just struggled. Well, this program is for those people who try. Now, there are kids who don't try, and they're everywhere, not just in our district, they're everywhere. I'm talking about the kids who tried and didn't succeed. So this is a chance for them to get caught up, possibly backfill a grade that they're missing, to get those credits that they need. And it's not something you can do in an hour. It's something that'll take several weeks, if not months, but it'll be something that will build in, build into our schedule for next year.
So, so I guess that's, I'm trying to operationalize in my head, the, the student that failed algebra, that, is this during, after the year? So after, you take algebra, what, freshman year here?
It could be, it could be during the course of the year, it could be after the year, it could be during the summer. Anywhere where we have somebody available to make sure that they're doing the testing, proctor testing with the grading coming from a credentialed math teacher, a science teacher, English teacher, and that.
Meanwhile, have they gone on to other math courses, or are they sort of in hold till they finish this algebra, and then they?
Well, it's possible they're concurrently gonna be enrolled because of, you know, the requirement for three years of math for the high school, and so those are the things that, you know, we still have a few things to work out. But something they could do in a zero period, or after school, or at home on a weekend.
Okay.
But, you know, at home on several weekends. So.
Okay.
Any more questions about that one?
Yeah. Sort of piggyback on that, they have to have taken the class first and failed it before they can do this alternate?
Well, okay, so let's talk, so, Mr. Patz, the credit recovery, obviously, is for kids who might have failed a class and didn't get the credits they needed. It would be for kids who didn't take the class because they didn't get a chance to take the class because it wasn't within their educational plan from wherever they came from, whether they're from us or from somewhere else. So there's, there's two, there's two facets. There's the credit recovery side, which would take the parts based on the assessment they need versus taking the entire subject online, which could take a semester of work online, which, with plenty of work and testing in between. So there's two types. The, the kids who are deficient on credits that didn't take, let's say, a history class that they need, or the kids who failed that history class that need to make it up without, without teacher facilitating the testing to make sure that by their criteria they passed, that those kids have proven themselves to have made up what they need to, to get those credits back.
Okay.
And what about offering courses that we don't offer? So more of an independent study model on, for the student who's accelerated and wants to do something?
So there's two options on that. There's two options on that. They could, there's plenty of coursework they can do additionally, that could be a discussion. There's also the, you know, for absolutely zero, every one of our students can go to Berkeley City College, and they give you a bus pass and everything to go there and take classes. That's another way of getting extra credits. It's also, sharpens your mind, it gives you a little higher thinking, and you bring, you come back to school and you, and you, and it's a little bit easier for you because you're really tested at the highest level. And Berkeley City College offers free education to every student in every district, and our district is close by, so we can do that. Or they can do courses like this, if we find them to be purposeful, meaningful, and with enough rigor to make it worthwhile for us to say, okay, we'll give you that grade. Yes, absolutely. There's all those options.
Sorry, just a quick comment, I think my mic is on. I know in previous years, we had students participating in an online BYU program, but it does sound like we do have BCC, which is far more advantageous for the district because it's cost, it's not something that we have to have one of our staff persons even for one class, you know, for one student that may have one particular interest, but we do have the, a menu of options for students to attend throughout the community college or BCC specifically. It's not working.
Can you hear me? Oh, you know what?
I can hear you.
Needs to be much closer. Okay. But, but the point is that previously, we had BYU, and it was, what I understood is kind of expensive. It was pretty expensive, especially for the number of students that we had participating. But with BCC, we have that as a great option that, like you said, there's no cost to the district to, you know, for students to take classes. So that's great.
Yes. So it's definitely something that we have available to us right now. Should I go on? More questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, we have our prom on April 25th at the Hyatt Regency at Fisherman's Wharf. Grad night this year will be from Friday, May 29th till that Sunday. Is there 31 days in May?[757.32][757.32](Laughter). I, the poem isn't in my head right now. There is. So on May 31st, they're coming back. So here's their itinerary. They're leaving on Friday. How do I not know that? They're leaving on Friday, the 29th. They're gonna drive to Southern California, they're gonna check into their hotel, they're gonna go to Magic Mountain all Friday night, it's grad night. And then on Saturday morning, they're gonna take a two-hour nap at their hotel room, and then they're gonna go to Universal Studios. And then they're gonna be at Universal Studios till late in the night, they're gonna go back to their hotel, they're gonna be sleeping like babies.[793.61][793.61](Laughter). And then they're gonna come home on Sunday. That's our grad night plan for May 29th. I have, right now, I have approximately five chaperones lined up. Two of them are staff, including Mr. Weiner, who's heading this whole thing, and one more staff, I forget who it was, but it's okay. I forget a lot of things. Okay. Let's see. Earlier this month, our girls' basketball team had the opportunity to play in the CIF's Northern Section Playoffs, losing to a much larger school in Marin. To their credit, and to their coach's credit, the girls played with great intensity, from whistle to whistle, although in the end, they fell 38 points shy of the win. It's about effort. This Friday, we are honoring our Students of the Month for March. Before lunch in the cafeteria, the students being honored will be awarded a certificate and a lunch with the principal on the following Friday. I'm gonna invite the superintendent, if he's available. That'd be a better, better for them to have lunch with Dr. Rubio than me, because they see me all day long. Let's see, on Friday, April 3rd, at 9:00 a.m., our high school band will be performing at Annie Yates Elementary School. So we're looking forward to that, that's exciting. We have completed our on-campus weight room, exercise room slash free weight room with dumbbells, bikes, about nine sculpting machines, formerly known as Nautilus machines. We have completed that. The gym looks pretty good. And someone came to me and said, are you gonna get something for women? There is, these are, these are, these rooms, I don't know, did you, Mrs. Kritschlaw, did you see the room? Is it, have, has plenty for everybody. So the room is ready, and we're using it, and it's, it's a, thank you very much, Dr. Rubio, and the planners for the new school. We are very much, everyone is very appreciative of that, and that's what's going on there. Let's see, last but not least, we held short auditions for our first high school talent show. We have over 21 students who signed up to perform in front of their peers and staff next Wednesday, beginning at 1:00 p.m. It's our early release Wednesday, we get out at 2:10. It's a talent competition, Paula.[934.82][934.82](Laughter). Are there any questions? Any questions?
What is your talent?
I have no talent. I am zero talent, unless you call juggling a baseball a talent, I have no talent.
But you are competing, right?
I could throw.
I think your principal needs to compete in the talent competition.
I could, I could, you know, I used to sing. Listen to this. I had this car that had like 30 speakers in it, it was a little Mini Cooper. And I was driving to the beach with a friend, and I drove all the way to the beach and all the way back over the weekend. And at the end, she says to me, you really can't sing. After singing all of the great hits, I have no talent. I would like to introduce them, I will do it right now. Thank you, Dr. Rubio, for the prompt. With me tonight, I have, how many kids do I have? Not young ladies, I have six young ladies from the B R, what we call the BAUDL, which is the Bay Area Urban Debate League. Let me tell you about these girls. They're the Golden Gate Speech Association. They only have, they, they're the only school to have two teams with a record of three wins and one loss. They have numerous trophies and plaques in our, in our temporary building there, in that little locked cabinet. And when I spoke to the people from BAUDL, which we affectionately call Bottled, they were, they were just, they were talking so highly of how we have so many participating. This is only a small portion of the people involved in Bottled. And, you know, Mrs. Kritschlaw is the lead, and she's right over there. No? It is you, you're in charge of it. I'm not gonna make you speak, Kritschlow. I apologize. Mrs. Kritschlow, I, I call her Jessica, but that's because we're adults. I apologize for that. She's been in charge of this since, I don't know how long we've had this, because I just came in this year. But, but she's done very well, and there's very well, our team is very well thought of and spoken by all the other members. We have a first-place team, a first-place speaker on our rookie team. We have a novice first-place speaker, a second-place team, third-place team, fifth-place team, and JV, we have a second-place speaker and a fourth-place speaker. We had one young man on the team who left us, who was, who argued with everybody, but this debating, we're talking about debating here. But he was a nice kid, and he was a, another fine student. It happens, we have some transancy in our school, because some kids move away and things happen. But, Ms. Kritschlaw, hello?
Hello.
You know what, the more you say, Jessica and Mr. Burns brought along six, six young ladies tonight who are gonna do a quick demonstration and tell you what they do, how they do it. And I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let them come up here and introduce themselves to you, then they're gonna talk about it, and you can see what they do. It's very impressive. These kids are dedicated. This is, this is a weekend where it starts at 6:30 in the morning and doesn't end until 9 o'clock at night.
Mr. Ferber, do they need our mics individually, or?
I'm gonna take this.
Ms. Kritschlow, do they need their?
You got it? No, I got it, here.
Do they need our mics, some more mics to use? Is one enough, or do you want individual mics?
Probably. The both of them are allowed.
Yeah. Because they'll have to share that, they'll have to each talk into the mic. You want, here, let me give you another one.
I have to go first?
Take two.
So I'm gonna let her take over this, and I'm just gonna stand back.
So, you first? You first? Okay, so, it's gonna be a little impossible to act, I don't really need a mic, I'm very loud.
No, we need it for a JV.
Okay, so, it's a little impossible for them to do a debate for you, because in policy debates, a little long, it's like an hour and a half conversation, well, argument. But they're gonna tell you exactly what they do on a regular basis, and we're gonna start with the affirmative. She's gonna tell you what exactly an affirmative is.
Okay, so my name is Victory O'Nyeore, and I'm a JV speaker, that junior varsity. So I moved up from rookie to novice to JV, and then hopefully, I go to varsity. So an affirmative is the positive, so a positive on the plan. So our, our plan this year is ocean cleanup, ocean exploration, and the AF is basically supporting ocean exploration. So the United States Federal Government should support, should get $2 million, $20 million out of the, out of its board to, to fund plans so we can clean up the ocean. And the AF is supporting that, while the NEG is not. So she's the one.
My name is Justelle Aguilar, I am an 11th grader, and I am a JV. So as a first affirmative constructive case, I'm supposed to say the plan, and also my impacts and harms. For instance, since my, my partner Victory said that our, our debate this year is about ocean plastic, I'm supposed to say our plan, which she already said, and that plastic is harmful because they hurt animals and they hurt boats, or something like that. And I'm supposed to say how it hurts animals and all this stuff.
So, so in between these speeches, the one AC, as you call it, the first affirmative case, and the one NC, the first negative case, there has to be a cross X. So the cross X is questioning by the two, two NC about the first affirmative's plan. So they ask questions about the plan, like how much does it cost? Where is it gonna be implemented? What are the harms? Like, they try to get, they try to ask questions that can make it seem like their plan is harmful, so when they go up, they have a case against the AF saying that their plan is bad.
I am Jayla Torres, I am a 10th grader, and I am JV, and I am the first negative constructive case, and I'll be arguing about how, if, about why their plan isn't useful, and why we shouldn't do their plan, and why either we should do more research on their plan, or either we should just not go with it and do a total different plan, instead of going with their plan. And also, like, example for, if their plan can get destroyed, or the cost money can mess up the economy, it could cause wars within other countries, and just constantly giving examples on why we should not do their plan, and then like, just booing and like, just not going with their plan at all, and just like, giving, just making sure that we don't, we get the judge to not go with that type, with their plan at all.
Oh yeah, so we have cross X again.
Tell us your name, please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Bianca O'Nyeore, I'm her sister, I am, I am a JV speaker too. So in between the one N, the one NC and the second affirmative constructive, there's also another cross X, but a one AC about the negatives plan. If they have a different plan of the neck, of the AS plan, or they just question the NEG about why they shouldn't do the AS plan, like, they try to get the, the NEG to state, like, a reason, they try to get the NEG to, to come onto their position that, like, okay, let's put it like this. So if the, the NEG says we shouldn't do the AS plan because it costs too much money, then they ask them a question. So if we all die tomorrow, doesn't matter, doesn't money really matter? So they try to like, get, ask complicated questions, so the AF has a really solid case about why they shouldn't do their plan.
Okay. And I'm the second AC. So basically, after the one NC goes over her constructive case, I bring up cards that rebuttal what she's saying, so that, so that her, her arguments won't be valid anymore because I already have cards backing, arguing against what she said. And then I, I try to, if I still have time, because these are eight minutes, so if I still have time, then I go over what my partner said in detail, and specify to the judge and make sure that he understands what I'm saying and why. And while I'm talking, I need to persuade my judge to vote for me, and tell him valid reasons why it, why it will affect him, and yeah, why it's important for him to be on our side. So I might say, because of the economy, you might lose your job right now, or because of global warming, if there's no, if there's global warming, you won't be sitting in that chair, or you can't fight like Muhammad Ali, or stuff like that. So, yeah.
So, hi, my name is Blanca Aguilar, I'm her sister, and I'm a 9th grader, and I'm a novice. Yeah. And so this is the, another cross X, which would be done by the one, one NC, which is just basically rebutting to what the two and, two AR said, saying that, okay, so like, they're basically just rebutting what she said and asking their question as to why, why her plan will work better than the next plan.
Hi, my name's Hennessy Kitana, and I'm 9th grader, and I'm in JV. And I'm two NC, and basically, I back up my partner, and if she forgets anything, like, forgets to say anything, I say it for her, and so, and I support the evidence that she gives and the arguments, and yeah, that's what I do.
I also want to make mention, I hate to take the stage here, that at least two of our members of the, of Bottled are on the varsity softball team, and they won yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be one of our pitchers here, Ms. Kitana, right? And Ms. Jayla Torres. Anybody else on the softball team? Those two, so they're doing schoolwork, they're doing debate on Saturdays, and they're playing softball, so we have some great kids at Emory, and I'm very proud of the debate kids. And if you have any questions for any of us?
I have a, I have a comment, if I may. It sounds like there's a lot, lot of logical thinking and reasoning that goes into your work and your ability to be prepared and to defend or attack during the process. So I'm very impressed by your logical thinking and that you're doing this. I think it's wonderful that your teacher is supporting you and the school is supporting you with this. And I'm wondering if any of you know how much lawyers and attorneys make as a career, because it seems like, to me, I don't know if Mr. Athel wants to weigh in on this, but it seems to me that you are also preparing yourselves for a potential, the potential ability after college, if you so choose, to go through three grueling years of law school to make a lot of money and to practice that kind of work. So I don't know if any of you have that interest, but I want to make sure I shared that thought with you.
Or you could take your training and not make a lot of money, but work for the public interest, and use your excellent analytical and reasoning skills to advance social justice. So either way, you, you were both making me, you were all making me, I am an attorney, and I do work in the public interest, if that wasn't obvious, regret that I did not do debate in high school, because the things that you're doing in the back and the forth is exactly what I have to do in the courtroom, in the middle, sometimes in front of, I've argued in front of a panel of 11 judges, is my record so far, who are shooting different questions before I answered number two's question, number seven's out there asking questions, and, wait a minute. So concision and clarity and, and, you know, effectiveness is really important. So you guys are learning some great skills, and thank you for, Ms. Kritschlow, for all that you were doing to, to bring these students along.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ferber. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks. Just as an alum of Emory, one, I did want to let you know, and I don't know if you probably already know, we did have a student that participated, and his last name escapes me right now, but there is a graduate of Emory who's now an attorney, and he was very much, you know, in the play with, with the organization that you guys are working with. So you have their trajectory, and there's definitely legacy in that. It is amazing, as a student of, a graduate of a women's college, to see so many women taking on this position. I am incredibly excited about it, and it's Women's Month. Hey![1744.11][1744.11](Applause). So I'm really, really glad to see all of you, and I think even if quiet now, you will be so much louder. I was very shy, I'm no longer. So I really am glad to see, you know, you put so much effort and energy behind something that you do from 6:30 to 9:00. Awesome. Really awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
Well done.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, and thank you, Mr. Ferber, for your presentations. Do we have a report, we're going on to reports? Do we have a report from CSEA? ETA? Do we have an ETA report? Our student representative is not with us tonight. Uh, our student representative is not with us tonight. We'll skip that. Superintendent's report?
Yes, good evening. I have just a couple of things. I want to first, uh, say thank you to Mr. John Bowders in the community and to Ms. Enamoto and other community members who recently, I think, were working with Mr. Bowders to approach the district with some ideas and some, to alert us on some information regarding our partial tax and the way we've been doing the senior exemption. So, I wanted to let the board know that I am looking at those recommendations. We are reviewing our administrative policies. I'm fairly certain that we're going to be revising those. We want to make sure we're aligned to the current and the former partial tax language and that we will, at, at some point also bring those procedures to the board for your approval per our partial tax language. But I want to say thank you to them and appreciate that. Um, the other thing I want to mention as part of my report tonight is that we had two very good LCAP meeting, LCAP slash visioning meetings where we brought any parents or community members and staff as well up to speed who wanted, wanted to or were able to attend. Last Wednesday, we had a meeting at Anna Yates at 4:00 PM. Uh, we had a meeting here at 5:30 PM. And we sent that notice in US mail to all the parents in the school. Uh, we had a, a nice group of parents and community members and staff at both meetings. And I think they were productive and it was a nice step, I think, in better informing the community on what the LCAP is, as well as informing them on what our January work looked like, uh, in terms of what the community and staff created in January, where we believe we're heading as a school district. So, I think those were very good and I think I have some pictures for you in your weekly update. Um, the other thing I will mention to you is that I want to say thank you for, to Board President Affelt, who gets numerous emails in his inbox. And one of his emails often relates to grant opportunities. So, thank you, President Affelt. Because we completed with his help and the help of Stephanie Couch at CSU, a three-page letter of intent for a two-year, $400,000 grant to see if we will be invited to apply or not. We'll find out in the next couple of weeks if, if we will be invited. And I believe we have a good shot. Uh, so I want to report that to the full board. And lastly, as you know, the city has an activity guide that comes out every few months. Uh, and the next one, I'm very excited because of the inside color page that we will have again. Thank you to the city for that space. We'll have a picture of our new Emeryville Center of Community Life. Uh, and we'll at the top, uh, let everyone know that we enrolling, we are enrolling now for 2015 and 2016. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that. I wanted to give you the heads up that that's coming. And that is it for my report tonight.
All right. Thanks, Superintendent. Uh, for President's report, I just want to reemphasize the, the visioning work and, and opportunity and, um, uh, the parents who did come out expressed that they came out because they had received five or six different touches informing them about the, the visioning work and the opportunity to come and, um, participate. And so, if there are folks watching at home, that work is going to continue. And there are committees that are being formed, which we, um, could use more parents and teachers and community members to participate in. And there'll be information on the website in the coming, uh, couple of days.
One, two.
Week at the most, but a couple of days hopefully that will lead you to, to figure out how to sign up and participate in that. There's still a lot of work to be done, uh, on that and basically generating the three-year strategic plan for the district. So, thanks. All right, why don't we turn to the, that concludes our report, to the consent calendar. Do we have any items that anyone would like to pull from the consent calendar? I just, I had one question on the ratification list, but that seems to be the only one. Okay. Uh, so why don't, uh, do we have a motion to adopt consent items 1 and 2, the warrants and the minutes of our March 11th meeting?
You can vote but abstain. Okay. And you can still make a motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. Move approval of items 1 and 2.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
A roll call, please.
Member Ash?
I, yes on 1, I need to abstain on 2. It wasn't here.
Member Miriam?
Yes, on both.
Member Pats?
Uh, yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes, on 1, abstain on 2.
President Affelt?
Uh, yes, on both. Okay, motion carries by, uh, on item 1, a vote of 5 to 0 and on item 2, uh, 3 yeses and 2 abstains. On the ratification list, uh, Mr. Baker, um, it, it was just a, a clarification of this, this was a contract to, to deal with some, um, extra work in the bathroom, which I didn't understand the description of the, uh, there's some problem with the mortar bed and wire mesh in the gym restrooms that, that was presumably unforeseen, so that's...
Yeah, so what this is, is there, in the existing locker rooms, which were about fairly large, uh, I'm thinking about 2,000 square foot each, we had tile. And the existing building construction drawings from back in the 1960s did not show what was underneath the tile. And tile can be installed a number of ways. It can be done with a very thin setting bed or very deep mortar bed. And until we demolished the tile, we didn't know what was underneath there. And what was underneath there was a fairly deep mortar bed with wire mesh that had to come out. And then we had to pour concrete back in to give it a, the correct substrate for the new construction. And so, there was no indication of how deep that mortar was. And so, we took it out, had to put concrete back, and that's what this item is for. And we didn't realize what was there until the tile was actually pulled up.
Okay. Well, that answers my two questions of, of what the actual issue was and why it was unforeseen. Do we have a, a motion to, unless there are any other questions? A motion to adopt, uh, the ratification list?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
President Affelt?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our consent calendar. And we are moving on to, uh, our discussion action items. Superintendent, you want to introduce?
Yes, thank you.
The first one?
Thank you very much. Good evening. Um, I just lost my page, so. Thank you. The purpose of this item tonight is to secure, informing the board and getting the board's approval of the resolution regarding the annual accounting of school facility fees and developer fees. So, Ms. Doris Sue is with us tonight to, uh, walk through any questions you may have regarding this. And, uh, we have revised this and tightened this up since it was last presented to you in January.
So, there, there are several changes made from the first reading that you guys have seen the last...
I can't hear you very, very well, Ms. Sue. Can you? It's on...
Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, just be a little closer. There you go.
Okay, all right. So, there, there are several changes made on this resolution compared to the one that you read a month and a half ago. Uh, the first change was made in the Exhibit A, item number E, where now there is a separate page of attachment showing you the details of the expenditures. And then the second change was regarding on the same Exhibit A, item F, where we spell out the commencement day for the ECCL project. And then the next change was regarding the annual accounting spreadsheet where we just left off with the summary. And the last change is on the five-year accounting. Uh, on the very last session, where it said, uh, on the notes, it said spent in '14, '15, and, and also to be spent by '15, '16. Last time, it was just saying to be spent in instead of by. So, that's what's the change. So, any questions on this, uh, resolution?
Uh, yeah, so just a few tweaks that you've made and, and a few questions on that. The, um, the date for construction beginning that you noticed identified for us as Exhibit A, item F, says the ECCL construction begins November 4th, 2013. Um, what's the rationale? What happened on November 4th? As opposed to the actual construction?
Okay. That's the first, uh, construction activity that happened at the ECCL.
Was it some soil, soil work or, yeah, maybe the demo?
Demolition.
Uh-huh. So, that would be the construction would start with demo?
Yes.
I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Miriam as our expert to say that...
You may want to consider when plans were approved. You might want to consider when plans were approved from the state architect because that gives you the permission to start construction.
Uh-huh.
It's a little earlier. It would be even earlier.
Yeah. But a date, yeah. I'm, I'm comfortable with the...
As long as in the calendar.
Yeah, I was thinking it was the date when, in August, when the demo was done and we actually started going forward.
No, it would have been started before.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with the demo date.
Could we please talk into the microphones? The audience can't hear you.
Okay. Yeah.
Just to repeat what John was requesting, had to do with when started construction. I, I believe it would have been when demolition of the facility would have started.
The, my second question was on the new attachment, uh, showing how we spent $31,000 in '13, '14 in developer fees. Uh, and it's, um, 27,000 of that is, is professional services for attorneys in a case about developer fees brought by a, a developer to try to recruit fees, which ultimately was unsuccessful. And it's, it's merely a question for you to, I guess, research and confirm unless you know it off the top of your head, is, is that a permissible use of developer fees on litigation around developer fees?
Uh, this is the one that I need to check with our consultant on this. But what happened is, is regarding is a litigation from, just like what you said earlier, is by a developer versus Emory Unified School District regarding the developer fee refund. So, that's what they charged to developer fees last year in '13, '14. But I will find out from the consultant, is it permissible to charge the two developer fees?
Okay.
But just to let you know, the book's closed. So, I cannot go back because the book technically, the ledger has been closed for '13, '14. So, let me find out from the consultant first and then I give you guys an update.
Okay. Well, well, we can figure out ways to correct it if, if we didn't do it right. But, um, yeah. Yeah. But the nexus is clearly there. It's just, uh, is it a permissible use? Uh, member Pats?
I, the question for me is, did we, did we, uh, did we take in more money from this particular developer than we lost in legal fees?
No.
No.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes. Okay. That's, that's the...
That there was a delta, I mean, there wasn't a, yeah, that there was a delta in our favor.
Yeah. The delta in our favor. Yes.
And just to follow on, on that, Exhibit A, um, I understand from item B that there are other categories, um, storage spaces or development related to storage and for live work that would need to be amended for this particular, um, Exhibit A. So, that should be included. I believe we, we collect funds for projects that cover more than what's listed here, more than residential and commercial. It should be up to other categories as well.
Yes. Uh, the 297 and the 47 cents per square foot for residential and commercial on Exhibit A, item B, is what written from the prior resolution for Emory Unified. So, apparently what I find out from the city and also from, uh, Emoryville resident, that on top of these charges, we also charge like a storage. So, these are the money that actually the city is collecting from the developers. And I'm going to update that information on the, on a revised resolution.
Okay. So, that would just be the addition of, for, for B, it would just be two additional categories?
That's right. It will be additional information.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And are you, um, this is listed as an action item, though I think we've, we've determined we, we, it's more a notice item. We don't necessarily need to approve it. Is that...
That's correct. We believe, we do believe, although past practice in our district has been to send it to the board for approval as a resolution that Ed Code actually, and other school districts we've spoken to, actually just used it as an informational item for the board. They make sure 180 days have passed, it comes back to the board again. And so, that's a very public, uh, conversation or document, but otherwise it doesn't typically require board approval. But since it's been past practice, we, we decided to go ahead and just bring it again to you.
Okay.
We may change it next year.
So, are there other questions on this item? Do we have any public comment on this item?
Okay.
Okay, I would, I would move then that we adopt this item as amended with the additional rate for the live workspace and the self-storage space development included.
All right. Okay.
I'll second.
Do a roll call.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
President Affelt?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Ms. Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that. All right. Our next item is ECCL update. We have Mr. John Baker here to present on that.
It's coming into focus slowly.
Yes. Uh, good evening. So, this is the monthly update of the ECCL project to the board. Uh, there's been a lot of activity. If you've driven by lately, you've seen things have changed quite a bit over the last month. And so, I'm happy to walk through what those changes have been. So, design and construction update, site utility progress continues and that's going to continue throughout the project. All the, all of the utilities underneath the buildings have been installed. The gym structural work is underway and actually nearly complete, the seismic upgrade work. Uh, the steel is all about 90% in and the concrete is about 75% in. The expansion, the addition to the north, the foundations are now poured and are completely reported yesterday. The high school foundations are complete. The high school steel erection is not only in progress, it was completed today. Uh, and that the, the crane was carted off and we'll make a repeat appearance when we start erecting the steel for the K-8 school. The community building foundations are complete, those reported Tuesday. And we have started foundations at the admin building B, the one along San Pablo Avenue. Uh, the underground utilities are just about complete at building C, the K-8 school. So, that's kind of the way that the, the, each of those buildings is, is sequenced. Um, so it's been a lot of fast, you're going to see a lot of rapid progress now. Uh, all four of the new building framing will be complete at the, about the end of June. So, you actually see all the building, all four buildings, um, kind of, uh, what their actual form is. There are only a couple of designing, design activities remaining. The pool renovation is out to bid. We'll get those bids in, um, I believe, the second week in April. is out to bid. We'll get those bids in, I believe, the second week in April, and it's being bid out with an August completion date. The health center, we've, all the lifelong, the revisions made by lifelong are now complete and have been documented, and so we're done with the, the design of that facility. So all of our design work really in the buildings, we view as being complete so we can focus on construction now. This is the eight-week look ahead schedule. You can see again, the gym renovation, structural framing is kind of wrapping up. The gym expansion is well underway. Pool renovation is going to, the bids come in that first week. It's going to start the week of the thirteenth likely. High school steel erection is actually complete a little earlier than shown here, complete this week, complete today actually. The welding and metal deck work, which is where they install the deck for the roof and the, for the second floor, is, starts actually next week and will be done in mid to late April. High school framing, the exterior walls starts next month. Foundations report for Building A. Building A and B are actually wood frame buildings, so that'll look different. The two school buildings are steel and the community and admin buildings are wood framed with steel elements. So you'll see those going up. And again, K through eight school foundations will be done next week and then steel, next month, and steel erection, which is the last structural work, will start in May. And again, by June, we'll have all those buildings framed. This actually slab has been poured now. These photographs are one week old, so there, there's been actually a lot of change in the last week. This is basically where we installed new utilities in the locker rooms and the gym. So you see this is a wire mesh and that concrete has now been poured. So all the new utilities are now in place and that concrete slab has been poured. This shows the gym addition. This is where we're adding under the overhang of the gym on the north end. And so you'll see all the, the steel framing is kind of going in and we've got foundations in. There's the foundations actually, right before they were poured, those are now poured. This is at the K through eight school. These are the underground utilities. This trench, I think, is actually closed up now, and we're just about done with the underground utilities underneath the, the K through eight school. This is at the admin building, Building B, showing the excavation for foundations. Those, actually, the reinforcement bar is now in there, so that's moving along rapidly. You'll see this is when they're pouring concrete. They're pouring the first pour of concrete for those, for those foundations. This is at Building A, the admin building. These have now been poured also, but you can see this is the reinforcement bar, and then now they've poured that concrete. So the, these foundations are now complete at Building A. This is the outline of the new community room, which will be a nice, large gathering space for the community in Building A at the corner of Fifty-third and San Pablo. This is at Building D, the high school, and you'll see these foundations were poured as of last week and steel erection. So this shows, this again was taken a week ago. This shows the northern, the eastern third of the school. It's out, now all this steel is now complete. If you drove by today, you'll see that it's, it's actually quite complete. This shows the crane. We actually finished the crane work and drove the crane off today. This shows them putting columns in place. And again, this is now complete all the way out to the foreground where you see those, those foundations. So we're actually done with steel erection for the high school. That is complete as of today. We've had a lot of our effort has been on furniture, fixtures, and equipment. This is sort of the remaining design work, if you will. Confirmation of data, telecommunications, audiovisual, and security systems is nearing completion. We've been working directly with district IT and the city's IT and Dr. Rubio on confirming the scope of all those systems. The furniture program is complete, and we're going to be procuring furniture in three primary packages. The first for the gym pool, and we're in the process of finalizing that so we can do that procurement and this, and have it installed this summer. The next one will be for the high school, and the final package will be for Buildings A, B, and C. We're actually looking now at doing one procurement and then having three phases, three sequences. So it's a little bit of a nuance, but it'll be delivered to the site in three phases. The furniture procurement will be through a piggyback contract for the great majority of this. A piggyback contract is where the Emory District is able to purchase furniture through other school district furniture contracts who have been competitively bid. This is, districts do this statewide. It's a great way to do it. You actually, the small districts, you get the purchasing power of a larger district, so we may be able to purchase furniture through LA Unified's contract. And so you get the economy scale of that bidding process, but you get to purchase it at the same prices. So it's a great way to go. We're working with a vendor, the vendor that is part of those agreements, which is great because it's no cost to the district, though their cost is built into each, the price of each furniture. We will need to bid out or procure some unique items. For example, volleyball standards and stanchions. It looks like we'll have to purchase those separately. We may have some unique things, especially in the gym. We're, we're right now identifying what those are and determining how we're going to procure them. And each one will be a little bit different. If they're low enough in cost, we'll just purchase them directly. We may need to bid out some, some things which are greater than fifteen thousand dollars in value. Some items that have a contractor installation component, for example, the volleyball standards have a cast, have a socket that you put them in. We may actually ask Turner to purchase those. So those things will all be done a little bit different way, but the key thing here is we've got a, it's a little bit of a longer process. We can't go piggyback contract for some of those items. It's probably less than five percent of our total items, but we're identifying those things right now so that we can get those procurements underway.
When we do the piggybacking, are we limited to the furniture that LA Unified is, is selecting? Or do we have flexibility?
You can purchase from any, any contract in the state of California that has been bid by a, a school district.
All right, well, so globally, must we choose furniture that some other district has selected?
That is, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's why if there are any unique items, we would like to take, get outside of those contracts. We would, we would need to purchase those separately. We've been doing some vendor, we've been doing some vendor visits, and Dr. Rubio's been involved in that effort. And also, we've gone down to the Milpitas Unified School District has one of these piggyback contracts to look at some of their, and they have some furniture for Twenty-First Century Learning. The selection available is quite broad. So we're pretty comfortable with that selection that offers. But again, there will be some individual things, probably about five percent of the total, that we will need to purchase through, outside of the, of the piggyback contract procedure.
The superintendent showed us some, I don't know, he had a picture a couple of weeks ago of some Twenty-First Century furniture. Is that, I mean, you know, something like that on a piggyback contract somewhere in the state?
Correct. In fact, what we're, the, the images you saw, we're looking at, we're looking at what's available through those piggyback contracts.
With that unusual or unique items, does that include like play structures and things like that?
It includes anything that we will, anything that the district would like to purchase, which is not available in a piggyback contract. So play structures commonly will have a, play equipment will, they'll be in one of those contracts. They're, they're fairly broad. So it's, we're confirming what's available, and anything in our program which is not available, we would procure separately. So it depends on whether it's available. But many districts, many of these contracts include things like play structures, laboratory equipment, gym equipment. They include those sorts of things. So we have our program, which says exactly what sort, what type of each piece of furniture and each type of equipment. We are then researching with the vendor's assistants, all those piggyback contracts, to find out where we can purchase them and where we can't, we would, we would purchase them separately.
So we have some play equipment on planned?
Yes, I believe so. Yes, we do.
Can you send me that? Because I've been asking for that for a while and not gotten it in the past. So I'd love to see what the play structure is going to look like.
The play structure, play equipment specifically?
Yeah.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Mr. Baker, I'm sorry, just a clarification, just out of curiosity, because I'm recalling that the project had some type of structure designed. I forgot what, it had a name I don't recall, but is that, was that value engineered out or do we still have it in? Do you recall?
That was not, no, we did not value engineer any play equipment in the.
It was as an apparatus that seemed to be attached to the building that students could almost.
Wiggle wall?
It was, it was the climbing wall is what was taken out in the value engineering process. That's correct.
That's a climbing wall, but I thought there was something else that, that was another apparatus attached to the building that almost sounded like.
Like tunnels that children could go through and go up.
I want to call it a hamster.
No, we did not remove the, there's, there's play equipment in the K through eight playground area. We didn't change any of that scope in the VE process. We did remove the climbing wall. There was concern from both the city and the district about liability for that piece of equipment and some other things, so we took that out. It could always be added back in later.
Is that a climbing wall like that you see at a climbing gym?
Correct.
Okay, but it's not that enclosed structure?
No, the, the play equipment in the K through eight school was not changed.
So again, I've, I've looked myself and we've, I know, you know, it's been several months, maybe even going on a year now, that we've asked about, that I've, that I've asked about it, and I just, I'm, I've never seen any drawings. You know, I've seen the wiggle, I'm going to call it the wiggle wall because that's what it's called with the Y in a C A, but I've never seen a K eight. There's some things in the kinder area.
Right.
That are kinder aged, but there is, I've never seen anything in the one through five play structure wall.
Well, we'll be happy to forward the, the current scope in both of those areas to you so you can take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Can I get an expected timeline on that?
I'll, I'll buy, certainly within, within one, within the next, within the next week.
Okay, thank you.
Finally, schedule. Again, this is our overall schedule. We've looked at for some time that shows the, the move-in dates for the three phases of the project and also the procurement dates. I just, I do want to point out that, as I mentioned before, there are, there are a couple of schedule impact issues that we're working through with Turner. The first of those is that the DTSC approval, I think I've probably mentioned this in every one of my reports, that we had a three or four, three or four week delay on DTSC approval, which impacted the high school start, actually impacted the start of all of the buildings except for Building A. Turner has finally submitted their formal application for that. We believe there's an appropriate twenty-five calendar day delay. I mean, this happened last, last November, but we're just getting around it to negotiate it now. So that would actually push the high school occup, the high school substantial completion date to early December. So we've been anticipating this for some time. We're working with Turner to pick that time back up. So we actually had a meeting today to talk about that, but we are probably, my next board update will bring forth the, that granting of that, of those twenty-five days. Secondly, we've had a lot of very interesting things in San Pablo Avenue come about, which have really impacted our site utility work. We, the, I've got good news to bring. There's, there was a twenty-four inch line, water line built in nineteen twenty-eight that's taken us about two weeks to figure out what it is. And East Bay Mud finally in their archives found out that that was decommissioned back in the nineteen sixties, and they found the documentation. So we're able to actually cut that out and do our, do our sewer connections. But there's a lot of, we've had some unforeseen issues and some challenges with Caltrans and the permits, so we're having to resequence the site utilities and are working diligently with Turner to make sure there's no schedule impact to that. Just giving you a heads up now that in the coming weeks, I'll be able to give you an update on how those, how that site utility sequencing and the work in San Pablo is going to impact the project. And that is it for my update, and I'd love to entertain any questions.
Yeah, tell me again what the, I heard you say there's a delay on the high school, and I heard twenty-five days, but my last understanding was end in, end of November, early December anyway for the high school completion.
Correct, yeah.
And now you're saying it's.
Right, the contract.
Early December.
Right, the contract.
Doesn't sound like twenty-five days.
Contract completion date for the high school is, the contract completion date, substantial completion, which is when you can occupy and move in, is November seventeenth. And we had a, what we believe, a twenty-five day delay in DTSC approval so we could start grading, and that moves the whole schedule back. And so there, Turner, as per the contract, is requesting a time extension for the completion of that, of the high school. And it, all of our analysis, it's, it's something we knew about before it even happened, so that is legitimate. We're, Turner and ourselves, we're eager to pick that time back up again. We are challenged by the fact that we cannot do Saturday work, which we're, it's not allowed by the City of Amoryville unless city council approves an individual Saturday. That's something that's still an option, but would be a, a challenge to, we need to partner with the city to have that kind of plan put in place. But we're, we, I've tasked Turner with picking that time back up so that we can, we can complete early, but with a twenty-five day extension, it takes it, I think, December twelfth. So still within time to, to open the school up, but it just tightens up our schedule that much more.
Didn't the schedule build in a certain number of weather days, which we haven't used, though?
The, with the schedule, the schedule does not have weather days. What it does is it only allows Turner to receive an time extension if the rain, if the, if the weather, if there's a hundred and fifty percent of normal rain for the time period. And as we all know, we've not really had a very wet winter, so we, we don't have any of that, but we don't have days that we get back. It requires them to make up the days that they're delayed if it, if it's under, under fifty percent of normal.
I see, okay. And how long, say December twelfth is the date that they finish? How much time do we need to actually physically move furniture, hook up computers?
We're able to move furniture in before that date. Substantial completion is a date at which the building can be occupied for its intended use, when DSA says you can occupy. And that's when contracts are there, complete with everything. We've done our punch list that says what needs to be complete. It's when you can actually occupy the building. You can move furniture in prior to that. It's commonly done. We're doing it in schools right now. And then the system is startup, and those sorts of things are done before then. It's when you can actually occupy the building. So we could start moving activities before those dates.
But in, yeah, in terms of teachers coming in and moving their materials, that's December twelfth date.
We would likely do the full, the move over winter break in any case, so that really doesn't change. It's just, what this schedule impact would do is it would just tighten up our, our move-in period.
Yeah.
But it would still allow us to have, all the new furniture could be installed before then. Building systems are, will, will be commissioned largely before then. So there's, it just, it just gives us less, less of a window for error. And that's what may, that's what we're all concerned about. It's if there's any other kind of unforeseen delay that it would tighten it up even more. But we're, we're kind of working on that every day.
Okay, if we did Saturdays and worked that out with the city and the community, is that an extra cost or?
It would be a premium time cost, but it's fairly nominal. It's probably about, probably about two thousand dollars per Saturday, two to three. It's actually a very effective way of picking time up. But again, the sense, the community is very sensitive to Saturday work. They voiced it in public forums that they don't want to do that. It's just, it's a, it's a unique challenge of this project that we don't have that opportunity available to us, as we typically.
There's no way the city would go for Saturday. They were pretty adamant when they said no.
Right, and I, that's my view as well.
And yet, you mentioned at the time that there was stuff we could do on Saturday that wouldn't be noisy and loud and intrusive that, so I didn't, bringing, you know, like the furniture move-in and other internal work.
Yeah, the, the city's noise ordinance allows non-noisy work, which again is subjective, to take place on Saturdays. However, the joint operating agreement with the city does not allow any Saturday work. And that was actually, we, after a consultation with the city attorney, that was what, what, my understanding of the, of the, of the JOA is.
So I, just to piggyback, I think, you know, ideally, that still becomes a conversation that the two of us, two bodies have a discussion because I think part of it is that we do have students and staff, you know, sitting in an elementary school site for, has been longer than expected. And at the same time, we have, I'm sure, an owner of a facility looking to get their school site back and a community that wants their school site back. So I mean, there is an opportunity to have a conversation, and maybe there is a certain program that would allow for us to maintain some calm and respect the neighbors. I mean, literally. So I mean, there may be ways to do it, so I wouldn't, I mean, I think part of the problem with this project in so many ways is that not, not enough conversation is happening between the two elected bodies. So I mean, I think that's where, you know, we need to have that discussion, at least to know where things are, because that's what contracts have always been amended. I mean, so that's just one, one, one thing. I don't want to write it off the table as a board member to say that it's not going to happen, but I think we need to explain where our situation is. We do not need to rush a move-in either. So we already rushed enough things and, you know, because we have things that happen, and we don't want to spend another five hundred thousand dollars to rent a facility that we're not in need, in, in use of. So I mean, we have to be sensitive about the cost of the expense on either side of it, so.
I think it's just, again, it's just an idea. We're, we're well aware of the community, how the community feels about it. It's just something that's worth having a conversation with the, the council, and also, more importantly, those, people in the community. more importantly, those who meet, those people in the community and the neighbors and see if it's something that the, the community and the, and the district would be interested in. And it's just, it's just a, it's something, an idea to consider.
Any other questions, board members?
Mr. Baker, what does your schedule state for the amount of time that you're allowing for your punch list work for the high school portion?
We have the, the time for the, the closeout period for, between substantial and final completion is, I believe, six weeks.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this item? Seeing none. That concludes this item. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for your presentation. And I, and I think we'll see you next week at the city schools meeting. And for repeat performance.
And also, it will also include a, a design update by the architect.
Oh, good.
So it'll be a little bit, a little bit more than this information at city schools.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our discussion action items. And do we have any board reports or announcements from other board members?
You know I do.
Mr. Pat, you look like you have something to say.
So I think I'll start with a good. You know, we talk about city and school collaboration. And my son has joined micro soccer, which is put on by the Department of Rec, but held at Anna Yates. And so it's been a big, a big event in his life. And, and wonderful for me because I now spend Saturdays at the Anna Yates, which is not new for me. But there's other families there. Which sort of brings me to the not-so-positive things. It's been really nice, you know, having a son who's not quite school age. I don't get to interact with parents as often as I would like. And so I've been able to talk to families and sort of get a sense of their, their feeling about, you know, you know, the steel is up at ECCL. And I asked them, are you really excited about the opening of the K-12 ECCL? And I'm, I'm concerned by their answers. And I think it is not, it is not as supported by the community as I've been led to believe. And I, and I, you know, again, talking to parents each time I meet them. And so I'm, I'm, I'm thinking on this and thinking, you know, what we can do to make families feel good about Emory Unified, because it's really concerning to me. And then this past Saturday, I, I ran into a couple of people who attended the, the visioning and the LCAP. And they did really appreciate the outreach. But I don't know if it was as positively received as, as was reported this evening. I, I, and I'm troubled by that. I, I want to make sure that as we do these outreaches, that we, that families walk away. A woman who was there said at the end, she asked for a summary of sort of that visioning meeting. And it was, she said something along the lines of, you wanted to hear what we have to say, but it wasn't going to impact in the actual change. And I'm seeing a nodding in the audience, so I guess I'm not the only one who had that experience. And I find that, you know, if you're going to have a meeting to get public feedback, it's great that you want to listen to it, but if there's no actual intent to incorporate some of it, that's troubling. And so I felt the need to report out on that. You know, so I, I think as we go through this visioning process, and again, I'm trying to be positive about it because I've been against it since the beginning, you know, but I think it's really important to, you know, I run into families that actually attend because I don't think the attendance was, you know, of 400 of our families. But we've got to make sure they walk away feeling positive. And then lastly, I've been troubled by the, the Emory Ed Fund for a while. And so I've, you know, been asking for some clarity on student accounts and things and have been asking for an update and a report and not getting it. And so I'm, I'm out of patience with that. And next board meeting, I'll be bringing a resolution and I'll give it to you in more than seven days before the board meeting, Mr. President. But I want to, I want to mention that, that it's, we need to clean up our accounting process around student accounts, around teacher accounts. And I think it's really important that we, as a district, start spearheading our own fundraising and, and sort of put our best face forward, you know. And so you'll be getting a resolution on that at the next board meeting. And so that's my five minutes on the soapbox. Oh, and I've been wondering this last thing for a while. Why are board reports at the end when everybody else reports at the beginning? I, I'm appreciative of having some people in the audience when I talk. Is that a customary thing or is that something we want to put up at the beginning so all the reports happen simultaneously? So I was just going to throw that out there. So, and now I'll be quiet.
Interesting thoughts? Other board reports or announcements?
You did, yes. You could report that out.
So met with the finance, superintendent's finance committee meeting. And we essentially, I'm glad you did that. We just discussed a little bit of a preview in terms of the developer fees resolution that Dora Sue brought to us, to the board this evening. And the fact that our district is looking at completing a third interim certification. So our ADA and our enrollment are of something we need to be really, pay quite a bit attention to because our, our vibrancy is definitely in jeopardy. So we need to make sure that we're all, you know, conscious of what our numbers look like and they have a significant role in the health of this district. So I think that is, you know, a really telling moment. And we are at some very pivotal financial based on our numbers. So numbers matter. And I think the takeaway on developer fees is that we are in good shape. At least we are considering, looking at ways to do some internal processes. So that's being evaluated. But that's what the balance of that finance committee meeting was about.
Thanks for that report out. Mr. Mary?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Affo. I did have a chance to visit the construction site at the ECCL this afternoon, or actually this morning. And it was with the OAC meeting, and that's basically owner, architect and contractor. And as an architect that deals with schools on a daily basis, I felt that it was a conducive meeting. All parties were brought something to the table and they are, it's a positive group. I will be issuing a summary or sending a summary to the board is my observations and any action items that would probably be deemed from that, from that observation. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
All right. Well, thanks, thanks for being there on the spot.
Welcome.
Be our eyes and ears. Feeling, feeling good and healthy these days? Excellent. That's what, that's all we want to hear. All right. Calendar review. We only have one meeting in April due to spring break. So the next regular meeting of the board is April 22nd. And in the meantime, we have a superintendent's facilities committee meeting on April 3rd at 8:20 a.m. And the finance committee will again meet before the April 22nd board meeting. A city schools committee meeting is, as was mentioned earlier, April 2nd here at the district office at 5:30. We now are going to proceed to close session. And this portion of the meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene, report out after closed session.